Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 4:28. I'd like to officially call this meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District to order because it is an emergency meeting and our recording is what we have. I would like to start with attendance. I am Jane Reggio from the town of Millville.
Erin Binaco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Harry Godat, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Jack Keith, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Okay. So I'd like to thank you all for rearranging your schedules to be on the call today. When the district was looking at reopening plans this fall, we knew at some point it might mean moving to full remote. An incredible amount of effort went into that planning, and I, for one, am incredibly grateful to our leadership team, union officers, teachers, and staff, who indeed were ready to make this move we had to make this week. I understand that's the stress that that placed on families and the feeling of being overwhelmed. And while I do not personally believe it's safe to continue in-person learning, I know our staff and teachers will continue to do all within their abilities to make this transition work for your children. Every situation is unique and everyone is struggling. We get it. Let's help each other seek solutions and seek understanding. Please reach out if you need assistance during this phase. Yet, having said that, there is one thing we neglected to plan for. The guidelines say that the school committee must decide on sports participation should the school or district select a remote learning model. As we will be in that model until January 8th, we as a committee must decide our position on this issue. And for us, it goes beyond sports, goes beyond the sports field. Activities such as band, winter guard, chorus, and other extracurricular activities in general should also be considered. So we're here today to determine our position on this matter. As a district, we have had 12 COVID cases in the last three days. We have over 103 close contacts quarantining, and both Millville and Blackstone are in the red. Blackstone at an 8.9% positivity. So should our students be able to gather in groups with appropriate safety and precautions in place while the district is in this remote learning phase or during any remote learning phase that we may have in the future? This is a general question. It has become specific because we actually moved to this phase today, but we should approach it as if we were back in August and what is the best for the students in our district and for our district as a whole. So we need to consider a plan that becomes our plan, our policy, or our protocol for how to treat extracurricular activities when we are in a remote phase of learning. I do have a couple suggestions, but before we get to those, I would like to ask Dr. DeFalco to tell us what he might have learned about what other districts are doing, what the administrators that he talked with today are planning or think that they could plan.
Sure. So, thank you, Reggio. So let me just give you a quick update on, just in terms of where kind of folks are in our pod, if you will. So essentially, where we are is there are two schools that are in a full remote capacity currently that have delayed the start of their winter athletic season. One is Whitenville's Christian Academy. They will be fully remote until January 4th. They are not beginning practices until December 28th. Sutton is the other school system that is fully remote, also until January 4th, and they will not begin any practices until January 4th. The rest of the system right now is trying to begin or has begun today in our pod, the teams that we're competing against or competing with. Now, the impact, there is an impact of start date on the season itself. And so I do want to share that the MIAA rule that outlines the provisions around the start date for practices and the subsequent number of days that needs to go by before the first game. And so essentially, if we were to start before December 28th, then we would not lose any of our scheduled games for basketball. Right now, we're scheduled between 10 and 12 games. If we start before December 28th, that would give us enough practice days, which we have to have 11, at least 11 days of practice before our first game. All right? So the first game can occur only after that 11th day from when the first practice starts. If that makes sense? So if we start before December 28th, we're fine. We can get all of our games in. If we start on January 4th, and I reference that date only because there are two other schools, Sutton High School and Whitensville Christian Academy that will be starting their athletic season on the 4th, then we would lose two scheduled games. So we would have between 8 and 10 games instead of our scheduled 10 to 12. And if we waited until we were back in full in-person, which is going to be on the 11th of January, or that last day of full remote being January 8th, we would lose four scheduled games, which means that students, the basketball team, would play between 6 and 8 games.
And that is basketball, not hockey.
That is basketball, not hockey. Now, for hockey, if we do not start this week, so if we didn't play it all this week, it would significantly impact our students' ability to even try out, frankly. The tryouts are this week. So that would have a significant impact on our kids and their ability to play at all during the season by not having any tryouts this week. So there would be a major impact there.
However, did the athletic director from there indicate we could try out later this week?
Yes. He did share with us that we could try out up to Thursday. That Thursday would be fine in terms of tryouts. Wednesday, I don't think they have any. I think Bellingham is a Wednesday cleaning day or something, so the kids aren't in school Wednesdays. It's remote learning, I believe. So there's no, I don't think there's practice on Wednesday. So we could try out on Wednesday without, Thursday, rather, without any impact to the kids in terms of making the team.
And how about like winter guard or?
Yes. So I do have all of those numbers for you as well. I did have a conversation with Mr. Schaefer today, and we discussed, there are essentially five groups running right now. We have a middle school jazz ensemble. We have a high school jazz ensemble. We have a percussion, high school percussion group. We have the winter guard. And there's one other group. There was me one second. Just looking for my notes on that here. But there is one other group that is also practicing right now. It's another ensemble. And the middle school is meeting, the middle school ensemble meets once a week for 90 minutes. And the high school jazz ensemble meets twice a week for 90 minutes each session. The percussion and the winter guard meets once a week for three hours, but they meet in different locations. One meets in the high school and one meets at the middle school. But I will note, the percussion group actually splits into two groups. There's a frontline percussion group, and then there's another group of students. So there's about eight students in one group and about 15 in the other, just to give you a sense of how the kids are broken up. And they're all separated by 10 feet. And they have, just to give you a sense, a schedule that will allow them to do some recordings that are really important because, as you know, we're gearing up for the holidays. So they're trying to get some recordings in our, you know, holiday.
And they were planning to do that this week or next or both?
Yeah. So the holiday concert, we have one scheduled, a recording session for the middle school band on Friday at 3:30. And then we have the high school scheduled, the high school band, next Tuesday. It's a 30-minute, it should be about a 30-minute session on the 22nd. I'm just looking to make sure I didn't miss any of our groups here. Yep, I think I got them all. They do also schedule practices over the holiday break as well.
They do, okay.
They do, yep. The middle school jazz ensemble has between 15 and 20 students. There are 15 currently participating, but we expect more to sign on, you know, if we're able to move forward. There are 18 at the high school and the high school jazz ensemble. There's 23 with the winter percussions, as I mentioned, but they're split with the frontline group. They don't practice together, so there's two separate groups of kids. And I apologize for not knowing the terms, but there's two different types of percussionists. And then the winter guard, there's about 15 students.
And then the other one, we don't know. Okay.
Yeah, no, I just went through my notes to make sure I didn't miss anything. Yeah.
I think it's because percussion has two groups.
It's split into two, gotcha.
Batteries, they're split into two. And they started about three weeks ago. So they're already, they're currently already in session.
Yep. That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So this is a question that you likely will not be able to answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do you happen to know, and maybe some of you guys as committee members, do you happen to know if there is anyone who is in or on any of those? Well, are there any other extracurricular activities that would meet over the holiday break?
No, these are the big ones.
Yeah, so there's no like?
Basketball, hockey.
Or there's no play happening that we know of?
No, these are all the big ones.
Does anybody happen to know if any of the students in any of those ensembles, percussion, winter guard, or I'm missing something, jazz ensemble, also are basketball or hockey players? I think in the ladies, there might be, maybe, no?
I don't believe there are any that do, that cross. That would have been one of my children, but she chose not to do basketball.
Okay. Well, that, yeah, that's who I was thinking of particularly, but I didn't know. I don't know. Jason, anything else?
No, those are the groups, the actual implications on, the different start dates for practices, what the other folks in our pod in the valley are doing. I believe that is it.
Okay. So I want to throw something out and then I want you all to react to it. Again, not my idea. Couple people going back and forth today, although one of them is my idea, but doesn't matter which it is because if you don't like it, I won't say that that was my idea. I think that we have all seen, and I said to everyone who wrote today, I will make sure that their voices are heard. I asked you all to read all the emails. We had over 30, well, 36 because I got one just under the wire here, but I responded to her too, I believe. But 36 messages from people who wanted us to know how important these events were to them. They were students, which I thought was incredible that students reached out. I heard very early on from Joey Dutton, from Ethan Larkin, from Nicholas Binaco, and then they just kept coming. They just kept coming. And from parents and from moms and dads. As far as I know, I didn't hear from any staff people, but again, I don't sometimes know them all or any coaches or anything like that. But we clearly did hear that this is very important. We heard that for some of these kids, more important than their academics. And so I, for one, wouldn't like to see that be a loss to them. And I made it very clear, and I hope I made it very clear to each of you, we are not considering whether or not their season continues. That was a decision made by MIAA. If it was a sports team, that was a decision made by the administration to have a percussion or to have a winter guard. That's not our role. Our role is from Thursday, when we go full remote, to January 8th. And it's the discussion, and Tammy, you know, Tammy knows. We kind of had it before. We talked about it and we said, oh, thank God, we don't have to make that decision because we're going in-person or we're going hybrid. We don't have to make that decision. Well, here we are. We have to make that decision. So I would propose that while the students are in school, so this week, up until Wednesday, that we pause any athletics and any extracurricular activity. I mean, literally for, because today's Monday, it already happened. So literally for Tuesday and Wednesday, we pause. On Thursday, we allow the hockey players to begin their hockey practice, staying in their hockey pod and try out. And hopefully, they will all make the team, including our eighth grader who is excited to try. And then basketball, well, band, percussion, all of the winter guard, basketball, either start Thursday, once we go to full remote, or start Monday, depending on, you know, what their practice schedule would have been like anyway. And, but the caveat to that is that students and families have to pick one of these things. One, can't be on the basketball team and the, I mean, I don't think you can anyway, but you can't be on the basketball team and the winter guard. You can't be on the volleyball team and the winter. We don't have, we're not doing volleyball right now anyway. But that was the, one of the young people who wrote to us talked about volleyball and winter guard. And I don't think we can have people do both. I mean, that's mixing groups of people. And so I would propose that they allow, be, must be, must choose one. So you're choosing your sport, you're choosing your pod to associate with, given your parents' permission to do so, knowing the risks of doing so. And that before anybody who participates in any extracurricular activities can return to in-person learning, on January 11th, they must have a negative COVID test. And I don't know if that's, we test them within the district, you know, that's just the temporary, whatever, rapid test. But I just, I think before that, you know, they are in pods and they are, you know, together, but they are with other people from other schools or they are sharing sweat, whatever you will say. And I think before they return and have an impact on other students within the school, they should have a negative test. So that's what I'm throwing out there. And now I will open it up for discussion and somebody to make a motion or, but I really do hope that everybody shares their concerns, suggestions, or if somebody else has a different idea, I will certainly entertain it. Tara?
I think Erin was going to unmute. I can if you're not.
I was just going to ask the, are you saying no activities this week while they're in school? Including band that's already started?
Yep. So no activity tomorrow or Wednesday? Because the kids who come Wednesday, if they were, you know, they've then gone to group, because if group one and group two are now mixing, right? If they're in the band, group one and group two are now mixing. So if they're mixing, then group two carries whatever group one had with it when they go to class on Wednesday. So for literally, you know, two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, there are no extracurricular activities.
Jason, would we be able to use the rapid tests that the district has in hand on Jane's proposal?
We can only use those for symptomatic. If they were symptomatic, we could use them. But if they're asymptomatic, we're not able to use them.
So Jane, it's very hard to get a test, to schedule with the right timing for that January 11th day. And it could become a financial impact to some families, too. I would err on the side of forcing testing. I would, I would, I would not be comfortable with making that part of our motion.
So I will just respond to that and say, I have to bet that there are families who would not be comfortable knowing that they isolated for four weeks or three weeks and kids who are out playing sports for the last four weeks or three weeks can come back and be in the classroom with them. You know, I just, I think, I think we're looking for compromise. I think we're looking for solution. I don't, I don't believe, I haven't heard from everybody, but I don't believe we're looking for the no, you know, kind of cut it off and see you on January 8th. I think we're looking for compromise. And to me, we made a decision to go remote from a safety standpoint. We're telling people, or we will be telling people, please isolate over Christmas, please isolate over the holidays, please isolate, you know, don't go New Year's. From Christmas to January 11th, you'll have those 10 days that are required for quarantine. Please do that. Please be safe. Please come back, you know, safe. So we don't have to do this shutdown again on January 11th. That's the message we're sending by going to remote. How can we send that message and then say to students, but go play? Checkers. I mean, I don't want to use one of the sports, but I'm going to use, go play field hockey. You know, go play field hockey, that's okay. You know, you saw the struggle or you had to see the struggle some of our families are having by going to this remote. And that struggle is real. And we have to be honest and we have to be fair. And yes, it may be a struggle for people to get a negative test. But as far as I know, in Massachusetts, they're free. As far as I know, there are other agencies coming. As far as I know, if you know the date is January, you know, January 11th, then that week before, you know, you go to Market 32 or whoever has Stop &amp; Shop or whoever has the test and you get onto, I know it's not easy, but I know it's not impossible. And I think in fairness to the 1,500 other students that don't play sports or more, however many there are, I think there has to be something, something to say it's okay to return to school. I don't know. It just, I'm throwing it out there. So that's where I, that's where I stood. Anybody else? I just don't hear what I want to say. Okay, Karen. Let me go with Karen, then Sarah, then Tara. So go ahead, Karen.
So my only concern is similar along with your lines, Jane, that in your opening, you said we have over 100 people currently as close contacts who have to quarantine. That number alone concerns me about starting sports before they finish their 14-day quarantine. Because what if a percentage of those end up testing positive and they have siblings? And then we're just keeping it going instead of doing what we're trying to do and going full remote? And I mean, I have a son that is desperate to play basketball. I get it. I want them out there. But I'm just concerned with that huge number. You know, my husband is a frontline ER doctor and what's happening in the hospitals is crazy right now. And we're doing the right thing. We're shutting down. We're going full remote. We're hoping to stop it in its tracks. And when, if we don't follow through and see how that plays out for those 100 people, I mean, we're not talking 10, 20 people. That's a lot of people right now that could have potentially been exposed. So I guess that's my one concern. And then I also can see your point about needing to be cleared before coming back and how important it is so that we don't perpetuate the cycle, I guess.
So Karen, would you propose then we don't, so it's 10, it's 10 days now, right? The CDC, I mean, I think ours are 14, but so 10 days from when they were notified, which is, which was?
I was kind of thinking along those lines, but then I just, I didn't realize how that would affect the hockey team. So I'm kind of second guessing myself because if it excludes them, like if there was a way to let them try out because we're still in school right now? I mean, I don't know. I just think that we, in good faith, need to see what happens with that large group of people that's potentially exposed. Otherwise, we could cross-contaminate across the board. Like if they have siblings and those siblings are playing basketball or going to band.
Because they wouldn't be able to come, but their siblings could. Erin, I'll get you after Tara. Sarah?
I just have a question about Karen's point. I didn't want to.
Okay, go ahead.
We're, we're sending our kids to school until Wednesday right now. To me, these are the most contentious days of cross-contamination. So I get that we're saying there's 110 close contacts, but our kids are in school until Wednesday. So if we're that worried about that group, that large number, why are we even, why did we send them in today and Wednesday? That, that would affect, that would mean we were going full remote because of those exposures.
Sarah, do you want to go?
I guess I just have a terrible time justifying, like allowing for sports to happen when we're closing classrooms because of the spread and because we're in the red. We're not in a good situation right now with the virus. And I guess I just, I haven't been convinced yet. I understand that sports are incredibly important. I just, because Karen stole every, all the smart stuff that I was going to say. But I don't know. I mean, it's a horrible position that we're in and people are having to make sacrifices. And this is, again, taking away a big part of school, right? But this is no joke.
Yep. Tara?
So I have lots of thoughts. The testing before we come back, I'm not really sure how effective that'll be because they're going to continue to play their sports. So, and hockey, for example, has a game on the 9th. So even if Ethan got tested to have the clearance for Monday, whichever how many days that takes to come in, he's going to be with his team still. So, and I think with the rules that they're putting in place and all the protocols to try to make it as safe as possible, that I think that the MIAA has put in what they think is going to protect the kids as best we can. I agree with having a hard time getting these tests done, whether it be expense or just the timeline of getting them to come back on January 11th. And as far as even this week, I agree that I don't know that it's necessary to miss even tonight's tryouts for the hockey players. They were in school today. They will be in school, well, not in school tomorrow, but there is a practice tomorrow or tryout tomorrow. I don't know that I understand really why they would have to miss those. And then I don't even know what the new proposed start for basketball, has that been decided? Or wait until this?
It will wait until this, but it would either be as early as Thursday or potentially probably Monday. The reason Tara not tomorrow or Wednesday is because those kids who went to school today will play hockey with those kids who are going to school Wednesday. And we know right now the cases are high. And I understand they've been in their hockey pod. I understand they've been playing hockey all summer long. And I understand there's lots of hockey, hockey rules. And I mean, hockey is about as protected as you can be protected, and yet there are still cases in hockey rinks. There are still hockey coaches who got COVID. There are still hockey rinks that had to be shut down because of COVID cases. So, you know, there's still potential for this. And so what we're saying is close down till the, you know, shut it down till the schools are remote. And then if the kids are in that pod, they are only in that pod and hopefully their families. And, and, you know, their interactions in that pod. And then it becomes a family, you know, what risk are you willing to take? You know, what risk are you willing to take as a family for your child to play that sport or play that instrument? Or or um, be in the winter guard? Um, you know, I, it it becomes essentially, I mean, it was our decision to allow the sport to continue, but it was the family decision to allow that child to to play that sport after they had no other contact with other students in our district. But they will, if they go tomorrow or if they go Wednesday, they, many of them, anybody in cohort two will have interaction with other students in our district. And it, it is not fair, given what we know, to put people at that potential risk. That's my, that's where I go from. Uh, Carrie and then Erin. Go ahead, Carrie.
Throughout the fall, I know there were other towns around us. I believe Northbridge was in the red for majority of the fall. Full remote and they carried off successful sports seasons. I think with the precautions that have been put in place by MIAA, which a lot of people could argue go above and beyond. I think the kids are safe. The safety precautions are there. Other towns have proven that it can be done safely. And I know we're taking them inside now, so that's different than being outside. But our numbers are low when they're inside the building. We're talking small numbers for basketball. Band is much smaller than it was before. I think it's, it's hard to ask families to test when those same kids could be in at market basket working after their hockey game. It's, it's a lot.
It is, it is. But also I want to remind everybody that we had those safety protocols in place this fall as well. And we had soccer, men's soccer that had to quarantine for fourteen days and we had women's soccer that had to quarantine for fourteen days. And and so we had to shut it down. And so, you know, we had to tell those students to to stay away from school. So, you know, I guess, I I I guess I'm looking I'm looking for a compromise between the view that says just shut it down and the view that says just let them play. So MIAA looked for regulations, but but their regulations didn't work a hundred percent. We know that cuz it happened in our district. They played with masks.
They put, what didn't happen in our district was team transmission. So it did work, Jane. And there was no other cases from, and we did the right thing. They quarantined no one else. Not from the team, not from the school classrooms was, were ever positive from each other. And that's huge. Um, and just something you else you just said were as far as starting after the school is full remote. Parents signed up on family ID two plus weeks ago. And we were full, we were hybrid. They knew their kids were exposed in in a school cohort. They knew their kids were going to be in a sports cohort. They know their kids are in a work cohort. So honestly, this going full, full remote is reducing the risk of our, our students and our players just to their sports team and then they're like, like Carrie just mentioned, market basket or i- if they have a job. Um, parents already signed up for that in a different setting. If anything, we're, we're going to be safer for these few weeks because we're reducing the, the cross to the classrooms. Um. MIAA had already pushed this date back by two weeks as a safety precaution from Thanksgiving. Um. The, the state has guidelines to allow the activities. And I I know we follow them in the fall. And I look at our two teams that were quarantined as positive, as a positive outcome because there was never any other transmission. We followed the rules. The kids know what they have to do to be able to continue their activities. Um. I, I just wanna point out one other thing because in your opening remark and Sarah just said it, Millville is not red. Millville is green. Um, maybe we're heading in that direction. Um, we were white a week ago. This week we're green.
Millville's four point eight or something like that.
We're still green though, based on our population. Um. Not saying everyone around us isn't red. I know that the red is there. I just want, I I just feel that it's only fair to to make sure we're giving accurate information and making the best decision we can.
Good point.
I mean, we heard from over, over thirty six students and parents and not one of them said, I don't feel safe about this. And if they don't feel safe, they can still choose not to show up and participate. That's okay. There's never a time that that's not okay. Um.
And I understand that, Erin. I understand that one hundred percent. I, I agree with pretty much everything I read today. I need people to step in the other shoe. I need you to be the parent who didn't sign your kid up. I need you to be the parent who pretty much has stayed home and done your grocery shopping, you know, by the the pickup. And you didn't sign your kid up and you send your kid back into classroom because we say it's now safe to come down. And they're now, and so this goes to Tara's point, why Tuesday and Wednesday? They didn't sign up to have their kid in the basketball court. They didn't sign up to have their kid on the winter guard. They, they put their kid in school hoping it would be as safe as possible. Maybe they chose remote cuz they didn't think it would be safe. But then we're saying it's okay for these kids to come in who have, who have not isolated. So, you know, right now the message is to to isolate again, to not be in groups. And what we're making a decision on that it's okay to be in groups cuz those groups are protected as much as possible. Uh, but be that parent who doesn't sign up for a sport. And be that parent, cuz we have to represent them as well. Be that parent who says, geez, now I'm not sure I want my kid in the classroom because I know these kids have been out doing all these, these other things. So I, I think, you know, I think, I don't disagree with anything you said and I apologize for calling Millville red. That was the information that I have received. Um, but, but, you know, I, I just, I think there are two sides. And again, I'm gonna go back to the compromise. Sarah, you wanted to say something.
I was trying to find out, I remember seeing a document that had, it was color coded too, but now I'm looking, I think it might have not have dealt with your level of community spread regarding sports. Didn't the MIAA put something out about what you were supposed to do? Or was that regarding like high contact sports versus?
They put out the pods with the community calendar, the community, um.
I think, I think I'm getting my color coding mixed up because they have red, yellow and green.
Yes, they did.
Sports and yes, they.
Oh, that was about the sport. It wasn't about the level of spread. Okay. I thought I had found a solution. I have not.
Tammy, did you, yep, go ahead, Tammy.
I am very torn on this issue. I, I almost purposely skipped this meeting because of the, the just horrible feeling I had all day to even make this decision on any side of this coin. And so I will start with that. Um. I guess I, I would like a one piece of clarification that I think Jason can give. Um, so I acknowledge the, the number of community members that are impacted um, directly and the quarantine number. You know, we're, we're, we're a district of less than two thousand and we have a hundred people in quarantine. And being in the school environment, I realize that how that happens, you know, if you how it spreads and and kind of, you know, you wipe the next person out if you're the positive person. And so I'm wondering about the high school specifically because, I mean, we're, the middle school um is impacting also, but Jason is the, you know, because I know that we closed Millville. Millville was a staffing issue. Originally, there was concern because of staffing and how many people were impacted on quarantine. Is, is that similar for the high school or is it an overall concern? Do we have a staff, like if we were to, if we were to say we were gonna open tomorrow for the high school, do we have staff? Enough staff to do so? Is it a staffing issue or is it a high number issue? I don't know if they're both the same, but I'm trying to.
Yeah, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I wanna answer your question and.
Let me try that again. What, what is the number of positive, are we allowed, and I don't know, whatever is private or whatever, I know it's HIPAA and FERPA and how many active cases are at the high school level?
If you give me a moment, I, I can see. Yeah, if you wanna keep going, I'll look for it while you're talking.
Um, so I, so I, I'm just trying to kind of, I, I said from the very beginning, I said last year that it, the common sense part of me, it didn't make sense for us, for anyone. It wasn't even us making that. Before it was like a theoretical situation. Now we're here, which stinks, you know? But it didn't make sense to me for a district to be distance learning due to concern of spread. But yet say it's okay to play a sport. I, I, I've said that from the beginning, even when it impacted my child in lacrosse last season. So, um, so I'm still here and I have that. I'm stru, I'm so struggling. And I, I read all those emails. Those are my friends. Those are my people. Um, and so I, but I'm still struggling with the common sense piece of this. If we're shutting the district down because of the spread, does it make sense to then say to, and and I honestly, I think hockey, for me, for whatever reason, hockey's in a different boat than basketball for me. Hockey, and I know we can't split the two, but I feel like hockey, they're as covered as you almost possibly can be with equipment, face mask, possible shield, all of that. You know, but basketball, I, I personally don't, as a basketball mom, can't imagine a game of basketball that's safe during COVID. And I know MM, MIAA, I, I quite frankly think they're taking the easy way out by putting it on us because they don't wanna make the decision for the state because they know the blowback they'll get. But I, I just, I'm so, I don't know how you place basketball safely in COVID. And so I'm struggling with that. But I, I'm just curious of cases.
We have, so we have three active cases at the high school, one with close contact. I didn't, I didn't hear that, Tammy.
How many people were impacted, Jason?
Uh, so I don't have the close contact with.
How many close contacts?
I don't have that list here. I just have the actual documented of those that are positive. I don't have the close contact list in front of me.
Okay. Cuz even those hundred in the whole district, like, does that include Will's class where cohort two really wasn't close contact, but they're quarantined? Because, well, they're full remote because that the other cohort went?
No, it's those that were close contact with whatever situation.
True, true numbers.
Yeah, I don't have that here.
So let me break the, let me, um. Who has an issue with, with not allowing pra, um, practice or activity until Thursday? Assuming you allow, I mean. I realize some people have a problem with anything at all and I get that, but if, if we were going to allow something, who would, who would argue specifically, we'll just let them start tonight?
I, I would.
I would.
And because our hockey players are, are with a different school, that's like a whole new dynamic, dynamic. They're, we're going to another ice rink. So being home, being in school today, they, they should be out there hockey tryouts tonight.
Yeah, but then they come back to school on Wednesday. Okay, all right, so two, okay. Jack, do you, you haven't spoken, Jack. Any thoughts?
Well, it's a real sticky situation because, cuz I really don't like to take anyone's right to assume risks away from them, but we've already done that. So it puts us in a weird spot. I don't like the mix set of rules for one set of people and another set of rules for another set of people. But at the same time, I don't wanna tell anyone they can't go do something. Especially because we have no idea what any given student gets to do when they go home and they're supposed to be quarantining. Cuz we know that there's a lot of people that just do whatever they want anyways. So, pretty, pretty much in a weird spot where we could go with all sports and come back and all the sports kids come back and none of them have COVID, but we still get a spread because there was another student who doesn't play a sport who did whatever they wanted or parents let them do some stuff and they brought COVID in and now it spreads again. So it's really tough to say. Especially because we don't have really any authority to ensure that if we ask people to quarantine, they do.
True, true. And and clearly they didn't over Thanksgiving. Clearly they didn't. Um, but we do have we do have a responsibility to minimize the risk as much as possible. We do have that responsibility.
And if I couldn't, you had four, just so everyone knows, since we're talking, uh, Jack, to your point into what you just said, Jane. We have had fourteen active cases since Thanksgiving, the majority of which the end of last week, which is the end of that two week period. So I think it's important to just highlight that as we think about this next round of holidays that we're about to go into. Um. You know, hence why we're gonna be full remote the week of January fourth through the eighth. Jack, to your point, we can't tell people what to do. They're gonna do what they wanna do. We want everybody to be safe. So at least there will be a window of time before we get everybody back together where people will hopefully have done what they needed to do to, you know, self, self isolate and be safe and so we can reopen the buildings on the eleven. But I just, I wanted to share those couple of pieces cuz it felt timely.
So does anybody have an issue with the pick one?
With the what?
Pick one. In other words, you play in the band or you do hockey or you do winter guard or you do volleyball?
Volleyball is a separate season.
I, I understand, but it was the example that somebody gave us, that she did both. So I used both. Cuz let's say we go remote after April vacation, she wouldn't be able to do both.
So does anybody have an issue? I, I believe there were some kids that played sports and were in the band in the fall.
I, I understand, but we weren't remote.
So this is only a policy.
We have to look at a, a policy or procedure for should the school be in remote. So we're really looking at something that says, if we go to remote, to Tammy's point, when you didn't wanna deal with in the fall, hoping we would never get here. We are here. And so, yes, we're talking specifics of hockey basketball, but we're also talking, what is our policy? Should the district go remote so that every time we don't come back here and say, you know, should the field hockey get to play, but not the tennis? Or the tennis, but not the baseball. Um, go ahead, Carrie. You're muted, though.
If we're making a policy for when the district is remote, does this carry over to students who choose to remain remote? But we allow to play sports. I know that's a whole different thing, but yet at the same time, it's kind of kind of carries into it too.
Do we have any that are full remote that are participating in these activities?
We do.
We did, I think we did say that we allowed that. I think we did.
They did participate in the fall as well.
Yeah, I think we did say we allowed that piece, but.
But are they allowed to participate in too? We never.
At the same time? I don't know.
In the fall, there, there were.
Delineate that in the fall.
We did not delineate that, but they're never in, I mean, they're not in contact with anybody in a classroom.
They could still wipe out the other group.
They could. Oh, they absolutely could. They could. They could.
So we're making a motion based on current winter sports with this one activity?
Probably going to have, we're probably going to have several motions, Tara. We gotta have a general kind of policy. And then to have a, like, what now, what do we do specific to this, to this season? So we've got to have a couple, I'm just seeing where people stand on like some of the components. What about the component of a, a test prior to return?
I'm not against it, but I would sincerely like to look into offering that test to the families in, in some capacity. Um, for a few reasons, but I I, I think there could be some um, kickback on making people do it. So I don't know how we word it to can't, can't we just start with saying, we, we strongly request everyone returning? When we return from full remote, whether it's a sport, whether they participated in a sport or we were just full remote. Because to Jack's point, we don't know what other people have done over their breaks, or while we were full remote. Um, but making it available to them is, would be a very different setting than saying, find one, pay for one, get one. Um, the, the binex now that we are capable of, of using.
Yeah, but that's, we don't have.
Is, has just been released to the state of Massachusetts in the past week from Governor Baker as free and available at certain locations, and that's the test they're using, the fifteen-minute rapid test. Now, I don't know how accessible those are going to be to people like us. But if they're using that test as free and available at certain sites, it are, are the restrictions that we receive them under going to change eventually, too. Where if a student isn't feeling well and the parent needs access to a test, or, or thinks they were exposed, right now it's just symptomatic, but if we have a hundred people in possible exposure, are we going to eventually be able to use those for those families? I, I think it's coming, I'm not saying we should break the rules. I think that's coming based on the way they're starting to use that test in, in the state. So that, those are my feelings on requiring testing. I, I feel like requiring it becomes a bigger issue, like a flu shot.
Which is required.
We do require the negative test before they return to school for those that have been out, so we do require a lot of things, but.
Can I just comment on the testing portion? Honestly, there is such a variance in the days of when you can test positive, negative, and the, the window of time of exposure, et cetera, et cetera, that I I think a negative test one day, that you can be positive the next day anyway, is my theory, so. And not my theory, I mean, we're seeing it everywhere, that you get a negative test, and then three days later, you go back to the job and, and you realize, then you get retested, then you have a symptom and you get retested and you're positive, so. I don't, I, I, I see where you went with that, Jane. It was a, I, I think, I think I appreciate your efforts in trying to get something that works for us, and I really appreciate that you started the dialogue. Because I think a lot of us are struggling with this issue. Um, because we know how it is, how important it is, so I appreciate all of those things, but with respect to the testing, I just I think that it, it's a false sense of security to get a negative test when you come back. Um, because you could have been exposed, you know, it could be that, you know, using sports as an example, it can be that basketball game the night before you got tested, and then it doesn't show up until two days later anyway, so I, I think it's a false sense of security, um, to require that, that's my take on the testing portion.
You're probably right. I just, I, I feel like I need, well, not I, but I feel like we need to have something. We clearly have a lot of evidence that supports the, the families and students who want to play. And clearly the message got out that we were having this conversation, that we were having this emergency meeting, and write your school committee, and I kudos, congrats, wonderful. But I, I'm not sure that same message got out to the fifteen other hundred families who don't have kids who don't play, or the twelve hundred, or however many there are, and then however many there are in the high school, who, who will then come back to classrooms with these kids who have not isolated. And I keep going back to that, it's like, you know, do we then, you know, have kids who are playing sports come back later, like have to do remote? Till whenever, but what's that whenever, you know, till we see if the spread goes down or comes up, or, you know, I just like, I, I feel like there's something that has to not protect, because to Tammy's point, we can never do that, this, the whole thing is, is a guessing game, this whole since March eighteen, has been a guessing game, can we be ahead of it, can we be behind it? But how can we get ahead of this, so that if we allowed somebody to be in the winter guard, we allowed them to be in the jazz ensemble, when they come back into the classroom, which, which isn't with those people, might be with some of them, but it's not going to be with all of them. And clearly if they played hockey with Bellingham and whoever else is in the, somebody else is in the co-op, not sure who. But, you know, with the other towns, and now they're coming back into the classroom, what can we offer as a compromise, as a balance, as a sense of security, as a peace of mind to those families in the classroom who did it right? Tara.
Just the fact that we have the social distancing in place, we have the masks on. I mean, like, I think Erin said a little while ago, we didn't have a choice at the fall, I didn't, I don't have a fall slots player. My son actually got sent home because he was in close contact with a soccer player. I mean, it's, it is what it is, like, I think we have as many protocols in place in the building that we can to try to keep the kids safe. Jane, can I?
In terms of the fall comparison, it just keeps sticking out to me that the positive percent rate was significantly lower in the fall and kids were outside. And when families signed up on family ID weeks ago, they didn't know there were over a hundred kids being quarantined, or staff or community members, I shouldn't say kids, I apologize. That there's over a hundred community members currently as possible close contacts. I don't know, I just think that's something to consider, you're talking about putting kids into an ice rink, into a gym. Um, and I'm all for a compromise, I just I think right now with that large proportion, like, at least wait the two weeks and see what happens with that large proportion, maybe that large proportion of a hundred kids, maybe we'll be lucky and none will end up testing positive, and then great, we waited the two weeks, we kind of are all good. We know that there's not a giant community issue and we move along, I don't know. I guess there's no real good answer, I'm kind of in the same boat as Tammy, that I don't, I don't really know, but I think comparing fall to winter isn't necessarily the best comparison.
Karen, I think it's not the best comparison to this, to the to the possible, um, transmission, because I, I, I think it's a huge difference indoor to outdoor, I think that is a big difference. And to Jane's point, many ice rinks in Massachusetts have been closed um, over the course of the last month or so, so, you know, in my mind, hockey seems more secure, but it really wasn't, right, I mean, so. But to your point about, like, when you sign up, you had a number and now there's a different number, then you pull your kid from the possible team, right, I think that's the solution for that part of it, I mean, if, if if I signed my kid up knowing there were one case in the, in the town, and now there's X amount, then I can say, you know, it's not safe, and that's a, and that's a conversation that parents may have to have. And that's not fun either. You know, I, we're all having those conversations with our kids about trying to be safer. So, I mean, I do think parents have the right to pull them from the, you know, once you register, it's not you're done.
There's no money lost.
You know, well, right. No money lost, and you can make that decision. With that being said, do you end up having a team if people do that? I mean, that will be our next, that will be the next challenge, um, of the conversation. If too many people pull out of basketball, um, do you, do you have enough to field all the teams that you need to, I'm not, I don't know where we're at in that.
Okay, um, I know we have a Facebook Live starting, and I don't want to end this conversation, but I do want to move us forward, so I would like to talk about a general policy. So we're not talking hockey, we are not talking basketball, we are not talking winter guard or jazz ensemble. In general, if we go to remote, how, um, could I entertain a motion that students can select one extracurricular activity, so that they're not even cross-contaminating between them?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Tara, is there any discussion about that? And I do know there are probably some people who play baseball and in a band, and they might have to, they might have to make that, that tough choice, but.
That they're, they're saying the choice would come if we moved to full remote, that, if that happens in the middle of a season, then, and they're already into activities.
They'd have to choose.
I think, yeah, I think, I think, I just think kids were already making, and families were already making the choice to let them be exposed in school, be exposed in band, and be exposed in baseball. So they were early.
Erin, that's one person, you're choosing that for your kid.
Right.
But then, when your kid gets COVID and goes to basketball, wipes out that team, and then goes to band and wipes out the whole band, that's the issue. You chose, sure, but then you just wiped out two whole groups of kids. I mean, you know, in theory, of course.
You know, I, I, I.
So that just reduces the exposure overall, which is healthful limited, I mean.
Pods, everybody keeps using that term, so I'll use.
And hopefully this is just temporary, because we're, we're hopefully on the cusp of these kind of issues. It's, it's, is this court policy going to fall within our COVID policies?
Yes. Yep. Only in the term of a, of a shutdown for remote learning. When we move to the, what we call the remote learning phase.
So kids are only allowed to participate in one extracurricular activity?
At a time, yep. Okay.
And Erin, I think to the point, you said there's no existing kids that are, that are doing both, or that you know of.
That we know of, yeah.
Not that I know of, but that's not a fair, I mean, I don't know if there are any middle school kids in the middle school jazz band that are going out for the middle school basketball team.
Right, so they would have to choose.
There might be kids within band that do more than one activity. They might do a jazz band and a, a winter guard, I honestly, I don't know.
Do they do full band at all? Is, is there such a thing as like, when all the band people do band?
When we be running into that would be the spring, the marching band starts in May, so that's the end of our spring sports seasons. Obviously, we're all hoping we're not talking about remote, remote learning.
May.
In May.
Right.
I, I, I'm going to say let them be outside, but.
Well, and policies can be revisited. Any other discussion on that? So all those in.
Slow getting to my unmute, um. I guess, just we've all seen the graphic about, like, this is your bubble, this is what you think your bubble is, right? This is what your actual bubble is, and that applies perfectly to this, I mean, yes, so you have your one activity bubble, but that bubble disperses to family members who then have their own bubbles, friends, things like that, so I'm not in favor of this, I just thought I'd put that, put it on the record.
Well, we have the motion on the floor, if the motion fails, we can change the motion to no activity at all, would be the other, the other option during remote learning phase. That's possible, too. Alright, um, I'm going to do roll call, all those in favor of um, allowing for extracurricular activity during phases of, during remote learning phases, but limiting those activities to one per student. Say, uh, well, you can say yes, no, or abstain, and I'll, and I'm going to start with Tammy, she's in the top bucket.
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Erin? Oh, Erin's frozen. Okay, I'll come back to Erin, Sarah?
Nope.
Karen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And, we'll wait for Erin. Oh, and I'll say yes, um, Tara, I know, I think, are you, are you, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Erin.
Erin says yes.
Okay, thank you, Erin, okay. Alright, so then clearly we have just made a decision that extracurricular activities can continue. Because we said they could select one. So the other part would be going from remote and returning into in-person. Just return when everybody can return?
Yep.
Sorry, Jane, can you expand on that?
Well, so, so my, my original start the discussion was that people needed to have a test. A negative.
Okay, okay.
What we say to people who have to, um, who have tested, you know, whatever, or quarant, you know, be quarantined for such a long time, or have a negative test for such a time, and so it was, it was very similar, you know, going off of that idea, in other words, you've been out, we've allowed you to be out, but before you can return, I don't know, show some good faith, I guess is where I was going, but I don't have another solution there, Tara.
I'll make that motion to return, when you shift from remote back to in-person school, no restrictions, no requirement for a negative COVID test.
Well, we don't have to do that. We, but we wouldn't have, we don't have that restriction, so we wouldn't make a policy that there is no restriction. Does that make sense?
I thought.
Because that's what we do now, is that what you're saying, that's what we're going to do?
So, so.
We're just going to return.
We're just going to return.
Okay.
I mean, that was, that would be what it would be unless somebody wants to propose something that doesn't allow just for the return.
I mean, can, I, I just, I, you know, parents are going to be listening to this. We have a lot of emails, you know, going on, and I'm sure I haven't looked at Facebook in a couple of days, but I'm sure there's stuff out there. But I hope that families, you know, allowing extra activities, please, 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 follow the protocols, if there are symptoms, if there, you know, take your kid off the team and have them sit out a couple of whatever, you know, there's cases in Rhode Island where, you know, kids are getting tested one day, they're returning to practice that night, even though they know that they had to be tested, and wipe out two teams, like, I'm, I'm, you have to be smart, take it seriously, so, you know, it's not just your kid you're impacting, so. I'm hoping that the, the joy of the game can't overcome common sense during a pandemic. So please, you know, I'm asking families to make good choices and set the example for your kids. If you know you're supposed to be quarantining, or you had access, or you have symptoms, to make the right choice. The, the game will be there to the next day, you know. But don't ruin it for everyone.
And I, I think that's an important message, I think that was a message that Jason sent out after Thanksgiving, or before Thanksgiving, and I think clearly not heated well, and I think people are people, and so I'm going to go back to the, to the families that you know, that, that, that did it right, you know, what, what can we do? So, so I am a person on the committee, and I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that uh, anybody who participated in extracurricular activities during a remote phase of learning uh, must have a negative test before they can return to school. I don't know if anybody will second it, but I'm putting it out there.
Second.
Okay, second by Sarah, is there any discussion other than what we've already had?
I, I just lost connection for a minute, so what happened with Tara's motion?
It passed, seven to one.
Tammy's motion.
I, I thought Tara made a motion that we did not require the testing.
We don't, we, Tara's motion essentially said they can just return, and that's what they can do, that would be what any student can do. When Jason says, or when the district says we're, we're resuming in-person, that would be what anybody would do, so.
I know, but I think my motion would have prevented your motion.
So your, your emotion is, was, is a negative, which, again, we'll revisit the Blackstone um, town meeting, it's like, you, you need to propose a positive and vote no. and vote no. So in other words, if you don't, if you want them to not have any restriction, then you would vote no.
Was that seconded already?
What?
We're in discussion.
Yes, we're in discussion.
Who seconded? Sarah did?
Yeah.
Well, I would just like to piggyback what Tammy just said, asking people to please make the right choices, which we've already done over Thanksgiving break. Jason's definitely sent enough communication reminding people that they're supposed to self-isolate, or quarantine after leaving the state. No large gatherings, he, he definitely, so I, I think that piggybacks what Tammy just said, in asking people whether you're participating in a sport or activity or not, to please do the right thing, don't come to, to school or work with a symptom, and, and please do the right thing, and follow the state guidelines at, at the same time.
I just wanna point out, that's not just Jason's suggestion, that's, you know, from, from everywhere, he just happens to reiterate- On behalf of the district, but there are lots of people who are suggesting that, including the CDC, et cetera.
One hundred percent, and he's very good at, at reminding people.
Just so, just so we transfer some of the blame from Dr. DeFalco, he's just reiterating
Oh, I like his reminder.
A lifetime of common sense right now.
So regarding the testing, since we're going to be allowing for extracurriculars and gathering, then we know for a fact that these people are gonna be assuming a higher level of risk during this phase, which is why I would support the requirement that they need a negative COVID test before they come back.
Anyone know?
I just wanna piggyback on that one. Sarah. The season continues after the 11th. You know, aft, after we return, these seasons are gonna continue, so that's the other reason I, you know, I go back to that false sense of security that you get tested. If, if we required the testing before you come back, then you have a game the next day anyway, with Herb Bellingham and Milis made up team, you know, in, in Tara's situation, Ethan would be playing on that team the following day of returning, of to the district, so that, there's no, again, it's just a, the test is a, for me, a false sense of security. If the season ended before we came back and you got that test, then maybe that would be reliable and have a purpose, but I think when it continues beyond, I'm not sure that it does that.
But if, but if I'm the, the staff member, and I'm the teacher, or I'm the student, who had a, a, you know, was a close contact, and I got a negative test, and I can return, and somebody in my brother's class, you know, got, gets it, and now I get it from my brother two days later, I mean, the same is true, that risk is there regardless. Where the risk is there, we're living in a time of COVID, the risk is there. I guess what I'm attempting to try to do, I, I don't wanna say appease, because that's not the right word, is balance the scale for the people who didn't make the choice that the athletes and band members and choir people and, and are making, and, and I, and I, I wouldn't want to say that their choice can be to go remote, and then their kids are safe regardless of what, you know, they know by sending them to school, they, they, they're taking on a risk. Well, I would say, then we didn't do our due diligence by protecting their risks and not letting the kids play at all. If we're letting them play, we've gotta have ballot, the, the scale has to balance on both sides. So if we're letting them play, and if testing is not it, what else can we do? Can we cohort the all sports people in the same group, so the hockey players can give it to the basketball players, I don't know, but, but I'm looking for something that, some give and take, that balances it for those people who, who want their kids to be in school, because there's benefit to being in school, we all know that. There is a huge benefit to being in that classroom, and that has to be our priority. And we, we said, coming back and returning students to school, that we would make that priority safety. Safety was number one. In the return to school, safety was number one. And by allowing students to play, and I, 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 like Karen and Sarah and Tammy and everybody else, I'm sure all of us have really weighed this today, and some people have cried about it, and, you know, the whole, like, we don't know what the right answer is. But by allowing playing, we are bringing in something we didn't have to bring in. We didn't have to do it, we could've said no. But we brought it in, so what can we do to at least try to balance? That's all I'm saying.
But I feel that's comparable to fall, too. We, every, people were exposed in the fall, and we didn't require the sports players to have-
We weren't remote, and the situation was very different in the communities. And it could be very different again in January, it could be very different again after February vacation, it could be very different again after April vacation. The vaccine that's coming out is for age 16 and above, it's not for the little ones. Yet.
We, we only had five cases before Thanksgiving. It's, it's very clear how this all unravels, just those Tammy dear piece about who listens then. It's, it's incredibly clear how the, the data doesn't lie. There were five cases before Thanksgiving. This all came off the rails at the end of last week.
Because we relied on asking people to do the right thing and personal responsibility, and look what happened.
And there were no sports going on through Thanksgiving.
No, we were all getting together with family and friends. Well, not we, because I wasn't. I was gonna travel back to Nebraska and see my father, who has, is struggling with illness and possibly on his way out, but I sacrificed that. I wasn't able to do that. So.
Jane, we're not, we're not ignoring your balancing question, we're contemplating it, just so you, I mean, I don't know, I am in, anyway. I just don't know, I just don't know what the, what the answer is. I know the athlete. Every, before every practice or game, the athletes have to fill up a COVID checklist. Do you have any symptoms? Are you feeling ill today? Can we just make that mandatory for every extracurricular activity? So that way, I mean, the kids know what's at stake right now. Based on the number of emails, the kids know. Carrie, aren't we doing that already? Like, isn't that the questions in the morning?
We're supposed to do it every day.
Right, they're supposed to-
How, they like, law, they actually log in, they have a QR-
There was a Google phone, a Google form for cross-country.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I think we're doing that, it's, the, the issue is, how honest are you? It comes back to, it comes back to integrity, and I think in this case, it also comes back to what I've historically called the COVID level, and there are people that don't believe that this is impacting people. And then there's the other, you know, COVID-10, that, you know, three people in your family have died since it started. And there are people that just think it's okay to do what you want, regardless of rules and what the message is from the wor, you know, the CDC and the superintendent and whoever else, so. I mean, I think if, in theory, if you're coming to school on a day, you have already answered those questions. And I, I think my question, Jason, I have a question to Jason. What is the, what is the current process? So if I, if I have a, a, if I have a positive case in my, or my kid is, because I think a positive case is clear. But if you're a close contact of a positive case, close contact of a positive case, should they be, because I, I think there's some lag time between when we're getting notified, which is then causing some problems. Should they be contacting our school nurse as well as, at the same time as the Department of Health, or is that, would that reduce some of the issues?
Well, what will, what will help reduce the issues, frankly, is if people will agree or ask for one of our rapid tests that we can now give moving forward. Because if it's positive, we can start contact tracing immediately. What happens is, they leave with symptoms. In order to return, they have to get the test, and then we find out that it was a negative test results, they don't tell us what it was, but just as long as you have a negative result. Or if it's positive, we then have to go back 48 hours from when the individual started to feel symptoms and start the contact tracing that way, which is why we all carry these crazy little notebooks to make sure we write down everybody we look at and talk to that were closer than six feet for more than three minutes for 24 hours, so. And there's 30 of us or so that have that. So, so we have to, we have to track that. So what we do is we start that backwards mapping to see who meets that criteria. So if we have the rapid test, which we do now, which is great, we can start, you know, when we return, we can start testing right away if people consent to it. The, the problem is, and I, I really appreciate the idea of like, how do we make sure that kids return safely, which I think is just like the main priority here. We can't use the rapid test at this point unless the, unless people are symptomatic. Because otherwise, I would, we could do it right here, you know, if people wanted to, and we could do that without any issues. But the problem is, we can't do that yet.
Everybody has a runny nose. Go.
Right. Otherwise, that would resolve that issue.
Okay, well, there is a motion on the floor, so let's turn that down or whatever, but the motion on the floor is people have to have a, people who participate during remote learning times must have a negative test to return to in-person class when in-person class resumes. So, Tammy?
Uh, no, no.
Yeah. Aaron?
No.
Nope. Okay, that was Karen, but Sarah?
Can you say it again, Jane?
Persons participating in extracurricular activities during-
The one I seconded, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, no.
Carrie?
No.
Aaron?
No.
Okay, I'm yes. Okay, so they don't. So our only policy thus far is that during times of remote learning, people, students choosing to participate in extracurricular activities must pick one, and only one activity, sport or other. Is there anything else we need in a general policy?
No, I think that, that covers it.
Okay.
And with those policies, I think-
Speaking of the protocol for this one, I will entertain a motion that activities can begin on Thursday once remote learning begins, more, remote learning phase.
Second, or are so moved?
Second.
Moved by Tara, seconded by Tammy. Is there any discussion for that? I mean, we're really talking two days.
Jane, I think that's one of the compromises that helps the other side. I think that goes towards the balance. I don't know that it's a quite the balance we're looking for, but it's a little bit.
It's a little balance.
It might be a triangle to a really big ball, but we're trying.
A 10-pound weight to a five-ounce jar. All right. Any, just, any other discussion?
Okay, well, that just confirm, just to confirm, that's gonna start or slash resume winter activities? So right now, band can't do anything until Thursday either?
Correct. So tomorrow and Tuesday and Wednesday, I mean, I sup, I mean, I, we can alter it and say Wednesday night, I, I-
Yeah, it could be Wednesday.
We're not, we could say Wednesday night.
I don't know if band has Wednesday, but we should, let's make it Wednesday.
We're doing it mostly because hockey didn't start till Thursday, but I guess we could say Wednesday night.
Hockey started today.
Well, I mean, again, after we're-
Right, I'm compromising.
After we're in remote, they don't start till Thursday. How about that?
If they had to try out at 2:00, you would have been okay.
I'm gonna go get some ice.
Any other discussion? So are, so are you amending Tara to Wednesday evening?
Yeah, in case there's band, I'll amend it to Wednesday.
So it's literally like one-
Or even basketball could start Wednesday, if, I don't know what their schedule looked like.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is that activities currently taking place must seize until remote learning begins on Wednesday evening at 3:30. I don't know, what time does the, the elementary school get out, or middle school, I guess, would be the latest? No, elementary school, it might be-
They're all done and out of here by 3:30.
So we'll say 3:30, Wednesday at 3:30. Tammy? That's what you get for being in the top corner.
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, anybody else have any other issues we need to address regarding activities during remote learning phases?
I have one question, I think probably to Jason.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Jason, I, I know there are a lot of protocols and such coming from MIAA to guide this. Have our coaches, how have they been trained to know what they're supposed to be doing?
Robert, our athletic, our athletic director, actually had a training with the coaches. And at the parent, um, parent meeting, I don't know, were some of you on that? Did any of you go to the parent meeting that he had?
It's at 6:00 tonight.
Oh, so you're going to the parent meeting, all right, so the-
Yeah, that's where we did our meeting earlier, because that was at 6:00. Oh, so-
I, I, for some reason, thought that was an update, I didn't realize that was a training piece, but, so you'll see the first chunk of slides, I think it's the first seven slides that Robert's gonna walk through with the parents are the ones that we went through with the school committee last week. And then there's a, a whole chunk of information after that that outlines all of the protocols and practices that we have to put in place to make sure that everybody remains safe. So there, it was a training with the coaches, and there'll be a meeting this evening, Tammy, to your question, with families at 6:00 PM, the Zoom meeting.
Thank you, Jason, and Carrie.
Okay, so this is what I, this is what I, I have. It says, "Our plan moving forward is that any student participating in an extracurricular activity may continue, continue to do so that provided they choose only one activity at the time, meaning you could not be in Winter Guard and on the basketball team if those activities happen simultaneously during the phase of remote learning." What does this mean for our current winter sports? Students participating in hockey will be eligible to try out beginning on Thursday. What is that date? December? 17th?
It's Wednesday, right?
Well, they, they, there is no Wednesday, you told me.
There is not, that's correct, but I thought-
No, it's Wednesday.
No.
You can put Wednesday, put in Wednesday in case they add ice.
Oh, okay.
Get Wednesday.
Well, all right. Once we move to full remote, basketball players, Winter Guard, and other extracurricular activities will begin, or can begin again, on Wednesday, December 16th, after 3:30 PM. Right?
Yep.
So you want me to put in Wednesday for hockey?
Yeah.
Well, then I can do it all. Students participating in any winter activity. Okay. Okay. Okay, anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.